Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman, Councilmember Cuevas, Councilmember Suarez, Councilmember Hurney, Mayor Pauline Miles. All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on our agenda is our ceremonial portion where we'll ask for our flag salute council. Mayor Protem Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And from Hope Chapel, I didn't say Hope Chapel, but George, Pastor George Magdalena, who's always here to join us with a word of inspiration, will lead us in a word of inspiration. Let's have our flag salute.
Please place your hand over your heart and recite along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we do stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council staff and everyone else. I'd like to start with a scripture. It's from Joshua, chapter one, verse nine. And it's God speaking to Joshua right before he brings his people into the promised land. And he says this, "Have I not commanded you? Be strong and of good courage; be not afraid, neither be dismayed, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go." Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for your presence and, Lord, we do thank you that as we acknowledge your presence, we sense your presence. And we thank you for your grace upon the city of Longdale and just being with every individual, Lord, from elderly to the very young. We pray protection and provision and everything needed. We thank you for those that you have commissioned to serve this community. We thank you for our sheriff's department and fire department. We ask that you give them extra grace to serve well. We commit this meeting to you tonight, Lord God, and we ask that you would dispense your wisdom upon your servants, that they make, may they make decisions that honor you and glorify you and indeed benefit the people of Longdale. I personally pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for those kind words of inspiration. Thank you for being here tonight. Next item on our agenda is going to be our public safety report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report from March 21st through April 4th. On March 21st, at approximately 7:30 PM, Deputy Rivas was conducting a patrol check of William Green Park and noticed a white van parked in the handicap stall without a visible permit. Next to the vehicle were two adults and three juveniles. As the deputy approached the individuals to warn slash cite them for the violation, they started to walk away from the van. After a lengthy investigation, it was determined that the suspect, who is a Longdale resident, who was detained at the scene with selling stolen electric scooters to kids in the park. Deputy Rivas collected ten stolen scooters along with tools to bypass the ignition switch on the scooters. The suspect stated he paid a hundred dollars apiece for the scooters and were selling them for four fifty apiece. The street value of the ten scooters was ten thousand dollars. The suspect was arrested for felony receiving stolen property. On March 26th, at approximately 2:00 PM, Deputy Chapo responded to the shopping plaza located at 4451 Redondo Beach Boulevard. He contacted a male adult who was causing a disturbance and acting bizarre in the shopping plaza. After talking with the suspect, it was determined he was under the influence of a controlled substance, and he was arrested for the indicated charge. On March 29th, at about 7:00 PM, Deputy Rosales was conducting a patrol check of the Travelers Inn located at 14808 Hawthorne Boulevard. He contacted a male adult suspect who was knocking on several hotel doors but not getting access to the rooms. When he contacted the suspect, he discovered he was on active probation for assault and had search conditions. After a pat-down search of the suspect, it was discovered he had methamphetamine in his pockets. Suspect was arrested for the possession of a controlled substance. This concludes my report. I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
You gotta work with what you have, right? Okay, so now this is getting to the good part. Hopefully you guys can hear me. I'm gonna use my, my best outdoor voice indoors in hope it's not too loud for the mic that's actually recording on television. All right, we'll see how this works out. Okay, at this time, I'd like to welcome the following individuals up for recognition. I'm gonna recognize today Longdale High School girls' basketball team lady partner. Let's give them a round of applause. Let's hear from our superintendent. Okay, superintendent, why don't you go on up? Dr. Paula Hart wrote us my favorite principal. Yeah, oh yeah, favorite principal. Kind of parceled two Cardinals, my house. One on the way. And two on the end, yeah. And Jacob. Jacoby, Jacoby, yeah, Jacoby Ward. Okay, yeah, not Jacob, Jacoby Ward. You didn't, you didn't recognize your name, right? Um, Coach Ward, of course, he's the, he's the coach in CIF SS AAA Coach of the Year. Ooh, that's a lot of initials. Give him a round of applause. Yeah. Coach Ward, let me say that again, so make sure I give it the proper justice it's due because I've been out of high school for a lot of years, so I'm not, yes, I'm not for me, I'm not for me with, with, with the initials. But it's CIF SS A, oh, no, 4A-A Coach of the Year. You're gonna tell me what all those initials stand for because it's prestigious and we're welcoming you to the diocese of being Coach of the Year. Congratulations. Yeah, that's right. Round of applause. All right, round of applause, round of applause. Okay, 2021 Longdale's Girls Basketball Team. After a regular, after a regular season of 20 to four, the Longdale High School Girls' Basketball Team made it into the CIF SS Division 4A-A playoffs, competing as number one seed. Is that right? Okay, that's good. On February 26th, they competed in the CIF SS 4A-A Championship Game, beating San Bernardino High School by a margin of, get this, sixty-four to forty-four. All right. Making them the CIF SS 4A-A Champions. Right? Okay, now this is the, get this, now, hold your applause to the end. This is the first championship in the school's history for girls' basketball. All right, congratulations. The team finished the season with an overall record of twenty-four to five. There it is. You guys brought your own crowd with you. There you go, I like that. Um, Coach Ward won, as, as we said earlier, the CIF-SS Division 4A-A Coach of the Year in sophomore guard, Kimiko, is that Kimiko? Did I say Kimiko right? Oh, sorry, sophomore, sophomore, oh, okay, sophomore, sophomore, Kimiko. While sophomore Kennedy won Player of the Year for the CIF-SS Division 4A-A, while sophomore guard Leah Sarabia, Sarabia, right? Sarabia? Okay, Sarabia. Sarabia, that's, that's what I said, Sarabia, it's the mic, it's not me, it's the mic, it's the mic, trust me, it's, it's, it's the mic. Congratulations, she's earned the first team honors for CIF-SS Division 4A-A. Congratulations, all right. Congratulations to the players, the coaches and the staff on the wonderful season and for your first championship in school history for girls' basketball team. That's a standing ovation right there. So what we'll do at this time, we'll, we'll come down to the podium. Principal Bill Self, Dr. Rodas, then we'll come down and take a photograph. Then we'll invite the players, you'll call their names. Now, now. Yes. We have two. Where do you need? Where do you need? All right, there we go. And then we'll take a picture up here as well. Okay, yes, ma'am. I forgot my instructions.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the school and our school district, we just want to congratulate our Cardinals, our coaches, for putting on such an amazing show this season. We thank the city council for recognizing the girls and their efforts. These ladies literally came from the bottom up. Two years ago, when most of these girls joined the team, we had a brand-new coach, we were facing a pandemic and had to figure out how to learn how to play basketball. With all kinds of restrictions, these ladies spent time outside, learning how to play on the blacktop just so they could be allowed to be together. And the heart and determination that the ladies and the coaches have shown that brought them to here today is simply awe-inspiring. And they are the model for what we hope all of our young ladies aspire to be, to put in that effort and that heart and that work to reach the goal that they want. And we expect amazing things from all of these ladies in their future. We just so are so thankful that you're recognizing them here tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Ward.
Thank you very much. I'm a first-time head coach and I want to first and foremost thank Dr. Rodas and Mr. Howard for believing in me and giving me an opportunity to be a head coach. I was an assistant at losing her, so I, I used to be an Olympian, excuse me. But, um, but I was just an assistant there and so, um, and I knew I had a passion for the youth and I had a passion for coaching the girls' basketball. My, my daughters are Olympian alumnis. And so after they graduated, I wanted to pursue coach, continue to pursue coaching. And, um, and so Dr. Rodas and Mr. Howard gave me an opportunity to be a Cardinal and uh, now I'm a Cardinal through and through. Um, like Dr. Rodas said, we did, we put in a lot of hard work, a lot of off time. I wanted to first and foremost acknowledge all of my parents for all of their sacrifices and all of the things that they have to, uh, to do and grow through, dealing with, you know, how strenuous and how tedious this process is to become champions. Um, and also I wanted to acknowledge all the parents for all their sacrifices and hard work and commitment as well. I just thank you guys all for the opportunity and I want to continue to make the, the city proud and the school proud as we continue to move forward. So CIF, I believe it stands for the California Interscholactic Feder- Interscholastic Federation. That's what the CIF stands for. And the SS stands for the Southern Section. So the California Interscholastic Federation Southern Section for Division 4AA Champions, the Longdale Cardinals.
I don't want to take anything away from, uh, from, from the team, from the coach, from all the parents and everything, just, uh, I want to say thank you for all the hard work they put into this. I know Dr. Rodas is a big supporter of athletics at our school. It's led him to quite a few championships for different teams there. So again, uh, just great job, ladies. Uh, very proud of you, very proud of Longdale High School. Thank you.
First up, I want to acknowledge our assistant coach. This is her first year with the, uh, with the program, Cyrida Burrow. Like in the words of Kobe, I'm a girl dad, so I wanted to acknowledge that this is a family affair, my daughter Tajah Ward. Our first player on the list, sophomore Annie Matamoros. Next up, uh, we have... Okay. Next up, I want to recognize freshman Sky Felder. Next up, we have another freshman Jasmine Schamberger. Next up, we have sophomore Nia Ford. Um, next up, we have junior Joshua Bindazu. Next up, we have another junior Corinne Tinda. Um, next up, we have sophomore Amorachi Jessica Essiobu. Um, next up, we have, um, our, one of our sole seniors, Tiara Eetman. And I wanted to recognize that Tiara is also a CIF champion in wrestling. She wrestled for the school as well.
While also playing flag football at the same time, three sports at the same time.
Next up, we have all-division player Leah Sarabia. And last but not least, we have the Division 4AA Player of the Year, Kimiko Kennedy. We have a couple of players that were not, uh, we have one player that was not able to make it. Her name is, uh, she's a senior and her name is Ashley Peralis. Also, um, we have a couple of team managers that were not able to make it, Lindsey Young and Kiara Haley. And I also wanted to recognize, uh, uh, my head assistant coach who was not able to make it for a family matter, Marshawn Gordon. Also, one, one last thing, um, my, um, my, my godfather, my, my confidant, my, um, coach behind the scenes, he coached with me my first year at, uh, Longdale. But, um, he's the reason why I coached basketball, I learned basketball from him, Robert Bozart.
And, and lastly, none of this would be possible if we didn't have our amazing athletic director, Mr. Dimitri Howard. Come on, Downey. Mr. Howard makes sure that Coach Ward has everything he and the girls need. They have the buses, they have the balls, they have the schedule, they have everything they need. Um, and he likes to play shy, but it really happens because of him, so he deserves this just as much as everybody.
Okay, we're now on item E, or communications. If there's any that would like to speak to this body on the or communications, public comments, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just approach the podium. If you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about... The city clerk will give you the signal to start wrapping things up, um, when you have about thirty seconds, yeah, thirty seconds to wrap things up after she give you the, the signal. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, sir.
Gary Adams, longtime resident of Longdale, 1950, 1981. First off, I would like to congratulate and thank the sheriffs. Earlier this afternoon, they issued a citation to the ongoing violations of heavy trucks and vans. And this is the first known by citation in the world. At least it got, I don't want this as the result of the coffee with the cop, but we have something to do with it, but at least it's significant progress. And hopefully this will show up in the safety report at the next council meeting. Uh, as the council and the city manager are aware, I provided you with email with history of what I consider to be an ongoing conspiracy by RJ's and his predecessor, Luther, in continuing ongoing violations of codes and art and laws. Hopefully, and, and, and part of what I included was the, uh, letter requiring compliance, which was issued on March 10th by Jared Chavez, for forty-five days, and they have forty-five days to comply. Uh, this is the bad news. And by my own personal observation again today, it appears they've done absolutely nothing to comply with the items listed in that letter. And the letter goes on to state that if they're not in compliance, that their business license is to be revoked. And I fully support that. If they refuse to comply with the law, they should not do business. Hopefully, I'm concerned, as I stated in my email to council and city manager, this will not become political. Hopefully, the, my understanding is the forty-five Hopefully, the, my understanding is the forty-five days expires on April 26th. I hope on April 27th that there is the revocation of the business license, assuming that they do not comply, but I have no confidence at all that they will comply. What they historically have done, and other city personnel could testify to this as well, they make half-hearted, I won't use the word, but I prefer, efforts at uh, doing some minimal compliance, maybe for a couple of weeks, and then go back exactly what they had done before with continued ongoing violations. This needs to be stopped. This, while it tended to be an ongoing conspiracy, uh, you know, needs to be corrected. We need to enforce the law. I'm not anti-business. I talked to the manager, Levy's neighbors Noah, this afternoon. Incidentally, while the cops were issuing the citation for RJ's personnel, made it out to see what was going on, and had a short conversation with the neighbors and Noah, and, "Oh yeah, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna take care of this. We're gonna do it." Well, come on, dude. In the letter you got, it states clearly that you've been six years.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Michelle Pina from Lawndale Library, and I'm here to let you know about some of the services and programs that are going on at the library right now. Uh, the library is now open to full capacity and masks are optional. COVID-19 testing site has been extended till the end of the month, and it's free to anyone who needs it, uh, no insurance required. Um, our programs, uh, we're gonna be having Little Sprouts Growing Great on every Tuesdays from 3:00 to 4:00. This program is to empower children to make healthy food choices through hands-on science and garden education. We will have Storytime and Hands-on Activity in the garden area, which is located in the back right across, um, the school. I don't know if anybody's seen this, but we do have a garden. Welcome everybody to go and see, um, our garden. Attendance is limited, so advanced registration is required, um, and this will be an in-person, uh, program. Smarty Pants Storytime is every Wednesday from 11:30 to 12:00, and this program promotes school readiness with books, songs, rhymes, and movement for ages two to five. Uh, with their caregiver or parent, attendance is limited and advanced registration is required. Also, um, in-person program. We will be celebrating, uh, Dia de los Niños with food tradition and family fun. So children and families around the world by sharing fun stories, learning about various food traditions, and creating craft in honor of our favorite foods and recipes. Again, this is, um, for ages five to twelve. It'll be in-person, and we will be having our kids' book club in a bag. Um, you can check out a book in front, the front desk. Uh, once you complete the activity, you can bring it back to redeem, uh, redeem a prize. Uh, no registration is required for this, and this is suitable for ages eight to twelve. Spring scavenger hunt. This will take place, um, throughout the month of April. Um, this is, this event is to help children explore the children's area and learn where different books are located with, while completing the activity. They will get a prize once they complete the scavenger hunt, and this is while the place lasts. And no registration is required, and this is suitable for ages two to twelve. Then lastly, we have a, uh, we're gonna be doing some activities with teens. We will be celebrating National Poetry Month by learning to create our own blackout poetry. Attendance is limited and advanced registration is required, and this will be in-person as well. Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to say hi to John Moore from Lawndale County, which is why I showed up here. Anyway, I just got into the business this weekend on Saturday, and I think it, uh, can't say enough about it. It's the CNN's Garden Center. Sure. And, um, anyway, it's finally a nice business where everybody can go and enjoy. It's springtime, it's a nice new nursery. I'm hoping the residents and community go out for it. It's, it was really nice. I know they had a little open house, I guess, um, Sunday, which I wasn't able to attend, maybe you guys did. Great business. We don't need anymore 7-Elevens, um, car washes, dental, paint stores, Del Tacos, or anything like that. This is finally a nice business, and we can spend our money in the community. I also wanted to announce that I had an incident today over at my house where this man, this isn't the first time, he likes to walk his dog around, and he's on the street, one who I don't have sidewalks where I live. Anyway, he has an extended leash where he allowed his dog to go after my cat. Uh, again, I watched this from my living room, which I had to jump up and run out and confront the man. Ridiculous. For anybody, he's not the first one. There's another man that walks his dog around too. Again, my cat was sleeping on its property under a car, and yet now I've got these guys that like to walk their dogs and allow them to go after other animals. Whether it be a feral cat or what have you, what nerve. So maybe the next safety report might be about a woman going after a man and showing how an extended leash really works. Anyway, that was very upsetting. Thank you.
Randall Abram. At the last city council meeting, the discussion on the audit of the fireworks sales revealed several issues. First of all, it is not clear whether some council members read the staff report on this item or understood it. The audit showed the failure of four out of six groups last year to spend their funds in line with Lawndale's municipal code. However, the discussion was diverted from the validation to an issue with each group's not completing applications properly. The discussion showed that this council had no intention of enforcing this code against their municipal distributors. Any council member should recuse himself if they have ever received any contributions or any benefit from these sales to avoid the appearance of a contract of interest, as in the past, groups that have given a pass or continue despite missing common deadlines or attendance that require maintenance. Selective enforcement was a way ahead in lieu of integrity. The audit reviews funds spent up until November 30th of last year. Therefore, the council has the opportunity to command a plan by those nonprofits on how to disperse any remaining funds for fireworks sales to comply with the law. A review of nearby cities at Hawthorne or near Inglewood shows a reasonable cutoff for the use of safe and safe fireworks at 10:00 p.m. Lawndale's cutoff is 11:59 p.m., but at 10:00 p.m. cutoff, when you make the fees with your deputies to stop illegal fireworks, there would be no hiding under the cover of safe and safe fireworks after 10:00 p.m. And this would also reduce the carcinogens and noise pollution residents' hearts to be subjected to demon from legal fireworks. The council ought to express an interest in having fireworks manufacturers contribute to the added cost of enforcement to go forth. Gardena has an annual regulatory fee imposed on the manufacturers. Both Hawthorne and Carson regard the manufacturers to be a wholesale permit directly to the city. Carson's municipal code established a permit through by city council, for these fireworks stand that sells a wholesale product in the city. According to their code, the permit fee shall offset the city's cost to issue the permit, conduct investigations, inspections, and audits, conduct the fireworks stand operation, safety, and orientation session, and retain the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department to conduct the fireworks compliance program. A wholesale permit fee might not, might be the basis of which a manufacturer to pay the fair share, as they ranked in over 164,000 last year at the expense of one of our residents. The city of Lawndale's municipal code section of fireworks, 8.2, is overdue for review and overhaul. Enforcement procedures and wholesale permit fees are only two remaining areas that need to be go about currently. There are only a handful of city council meetings before July 4th. Will Lawndale come up with a viable legal fireworks enforcement plan? It is up to the city manager on the step and assurance department to develop a plan that will actually be responsive to citizens' complaints. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicky Chavazian, and, um, my husband and I, there's Hussein Chavazian over there, are business owners here in the city of Lawndale. And I wanted to bring to the city council's attention, um, our business here, Hawthorne Motors Express, as well as Hawthorne, it seems to be Hawthorne Motors, has been in the, in the city of Lawndale since 1993. Okay, sometime in 2021, so twenty-nine years after we had already been doing business here, we received... We received, oh, I have some copies I made, uh, for the city council or different, um, citations that were issued, emails that we had correspondence with the city, so I would like to hand those out to you so you can kind of go over it to understand what I'm really talking about. So, that's what this gentleman is handing to you. Anyway, we, um, so we received these, um, citations, um, and, uh, some type of correspondence that came with it. Anyway, we contacted the city about the issue of the citations, what, what was going on, and we found out that a customer, after twenty-nine years, had complained. He'd come, he wanted, uh, he had come back to our business, because we sell automobiles, and to replay, to, he wanted us to repair his vehicle that he had purchased a year ago. Okay, prior, and of course, we told him we could not repair his vehicle, because we were not a repair, uh, facility, that we did not have a license to do any type of repairs, and, um, we, we, we just couldn't, because that's not, that's not what our business was. And so then, also, he reported us to the DMV, which also investigated, came out and spoke to us, because this gentleman had, um, also complained to them. Uh, they did a thorough investigation and he, they, and, they, they ended up saying that it was a bogus accusation, and dropped the case immediately, and said that there are all people out there that don't get their way, so they're trying to do it by trying to make complaints and saying things to, obviously, the city as well as the DMV. Okay, but also knowing that after twenty-nine years of business in the city of Lawndale, there has not been one complaint, not one type of person not satisfied with our business. We try to comply with our customers, to serve them, to take care of them, and when we put a vehicle out there to sale, it has to be thoroughly examined and be ready to sell. Okay, um, okay, so at that point, um, Mr. Sean Moore, who is now, I believe, the city manager, at that time, was planning director. He made several visits, um, as well as his assistant, um, this is Jared Chavez, okay, and, um, they... Although, there was a, this like type shack on our property that existed for twenty-nine years. Can you not hear me? Okay, sorry about that. I kind of talk fast, too. So this, this had existed for twenty-nine years. We have improved, uh, our property. We've updated through the years. Okay, and the planning director insists, okay, so then the plan, the, Mr. Sean came, Mr. Moore, came to the, our facility and said that, uh, due to this person who had complained, I believe, that we needed to give engineers and an architect's, um, plans so that we could keep the shop, the, like, the shop that we have besides our business, okay, at our cost, okay. Does that make sense, or not really? Okay, so then, what happened was, okay, so it cost us $8,500 plus the fees that the city charged us to get that taken care of, to get those plans. Okay, um, but really, for no, in our situation, for no legitimate reason. It had been there for twenty-nine years. But anyway, okay, so in good faith, and being business owners over a decade, we complied. Again, I repeat, at a cost to us of $8,500 for the engineer and architect's plans, and plus the city fees that we paid, okay? We thought everything was gonna be taken care of. Okay, but then, now, it was. Okay, at that point, no, we reached out to the city manager, who was Mr. Kevin Chun, okay, because we thought, because... What did he say? Okay, rapid and real fast. So, okay, we talked to Mr. Um, Mr., we contacted Mr. Um, Kevin Chun, okay? He said that he would take care of it. He would send out his, um, the Director of Municipal Services, Mr. Michael Reyes, who did, who oversees the city code enforcements, which he came out several times, and he said that absolutely right. This is not a auto repair shop, and, um, not that the accusations were bogus, and all citations were dropped, and nothing else was needed to be done. Now, all of a sudden, since the city management kind of thing has changed, it has started again, and that's why I am here tonight. Okay, with, and my husband will address with some, uh, calls that we have received. Now, with the country and the state it is in right now, you think it's absolutely ridiculous. Okay, I'll let, I'll let, I could talk on forever, believe me.
Hi. Good evening. And I'm, like Ricky said, you know, I'm here to really seek some help to continue doing my business. Because since I've been here, I've been arrested like this two times. One in 2006 by the person that was Sean at the time, tall gentleman in the planning. So I end up to go to a previous mayor and ask his help, that, because whatever I did, it wasn't enough, and it wasn't good enough. And finally, I had to go to him and seek the help. You know, I'm, we are here, we have to earn our, you know, help people work for me, and they want me to, building that we have, tear it down for no reason after they put us through all these expenses and everything. And they telling me, "Ricky, go do your smog and safety outside, different places," which is very unreasonable and just very brutal. When I have a place, I go take my place some other places to inspect it. And if I have, yeah, I have a jack there, because we do all inspection for government, we need to have the car smog and safety. So nobody expect anything more than car-related stuff in my shop. If anything else, besides that, it's, it's wrong. And of course, I have a jack, you know, and that's what the car related with. But I, I think, I think honestly, some people, they don't have a constructive mind. And they, but no matter what you do, it's just not enough, you know? You just, they put you in the corner, and you don't know what to do. I'm here to, you know, I did whatever I could, and previous city manager, Sam, the person, was investigated, DMV did, and they dropped. And as the management changed, they picked up all the thing again and start harassing, and that's not great. Okay, and what I just need to happen to continue doing my business, and I, I can't come and destroy things that I worked for for thirty years, because somebody tell me tear it down for no reason. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is John Dyksole. Um, I own a duplex 4227, uh, West 153rd Street. I rent out both units. I live in the Bajer Park area of Hawthorne. I hate to tell you, but parking's horrible in Lawndale. So, you know, much of the city was built in the forties and fifties, and built, back then, a lot of families didn't have cars, or they had one car. I know I was born in forty, nineteen forty-four, so. But even when I bought the property in 1987, there was quite a bit of parking during the day. At night, it got pretty crowded. It's gotten to the point now where, you know, I go by there during the day, and there is just no parking. And I feel really sorry for the, you know, people. Uh, we did a major renovation, um, and got all the permits, uh, in Lawndale, um, that, um, from 2011 to 2014, it took, took forever. So, uh, there is a parking pad there, that, you know, you can, the, in the back unit, there's, there's plenty of parking. For the front unit, there's one off-road parking pad. And we just barely met the requirement of fifty percent vegetation in the front yard with that parking pad and on the sidewalk. I'm wondering if there's any way I can request a variation, or a variance, I guess it would be called, to be able to have the people in the front unit park side by side, two cars, parallel to the street, and, and put like a hedge or something between the sidewalk and, where they're parking, so they're not, you know, parking on the sidewalk. I mean, it's just horrible. You see people coming home from work and driving around and around, looking for, you know, places to park. We get a mother with some kids, and she's tired and hungry, worked all day, the kids are tired and hungry, and, um, it's hard to find parking spot. So I would really like to make my property totally... So I would really like to make my property totally, everybody, place to park off the street. And, you know, if I can get that, that's a parking spot in the front yard, that'll help out two people. It'll help out my tenant that will come home and have a place because usually in the front unit, you know, two cars. And it'll help the person that can park where my tenant would park. So, so actually, what I'm asking is, is there any way I can do this? I'm waiting for, you know, I want to talk to the city council, if they, you guys tell me no way, forget it, then forget it. But if you could have some advice, can I, can I talk to the planning commission meeting or does it, do you have some advices to me on how I can do this? Okay, so just go back and sit down. Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. I'll make mention a couple. Ms. Librarian, thank you for the library events. And I believe, John, I believe it last, I think you might want to come in and talk to community development, Mrs. Jared, tomorrow, whenever you're available. Maybe she could help you with your problem. And with that, the young lady with the cat problem, where'd she go? There she is. I have the same problem on my block, but I have squirrels, not, okay? But I do see the extended leashes and they're out ten to twenty feet up in front of the owner. So maybe we can have a code enforcement go out there and check on that? And with that, I pass it on. Unless you want me to sing.
Thank you to everybody that came out and spoke. I did want to link up Michelle, as one of our residents mentioned, there's a CNS garden. And they actually told us that they like to donate some of their plants to schools and such, so it might be a good or a new business to link up with. And then I did want to see if perhaps, and, and I don't know how much we can get into it if it's an ongoing case with regards to the business that's, it sounds like there's, okay, 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 so I don't, I'm not, I don't think there's much we can divulge since it's an ongoing case and, but other than that, I'll pass it along for my other colleagues to speak.
Thank you for coming out. I would like to see if we can work on getting some funds from the fireworks and try and do this for a while, so if we could, we could chip in for the sheriff or some type of licensing. The vendors should pay some license to sell, you know. Besides that, thank you for coming and words Pat and Bernadette touch on the other two items, which is the business on Hawthorne and this Bronx duplex, so thank you.
Thank you to all who came out and spoke tonight. Michelle, thank you for keeping us posted on what's going on with the library. I've been in the library on Saturday mornings and you can't find any room because everybody is using our libraries, and that's exactly what we want to see. So thank you for keeping all of us posted on the good work that we're doing in the library. I have a question, Sean. Gary has brought up some interesting comments about that property. I vaguely remember prior, many years ago, and I'm talking probably in the seven, late seventies, maybe the early eighties, there were issues on the RJ's property before it was even on days and quarters. And it was, if I'm not mistaken, on the man's cell side. When Gary says to me, some of those records on that property are lost, I would like to ask if we could look through the city courts office, through the microfiche system, through in many different ways, and let's see what we can find out on that property and if that helps us with moving forward as to, to do with the property as far as what needs to be done. He did mention the date of April twenty-sixth. I would like to know what the city has planned, if that is the date or what we're doing on moving forward on that property. Deanna, I'm sorry about the cats. I too, in my neighborhood, it's poop. We have poop everywhere. I understand. I sure understand. Let's work with Michael and his department and see what we can do or what needs to be done to help us out. It's just really uncalled for. Vicki and Haas, thank you for coming and giving us the information. As Bernadette mentioned, it's an ongoing case, so we really can't comment much tonight. I appreciate having the information so I can follow along. And John, the same thing I would suggest is that you work with Jared or Adrian, our current banner white over here, that either one of them will lead you to the right direction on what is allowed in the city and what isn't, and how to go about it. All right? All right, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the public. I'll be brief because RJ's is an ongoing code case, but also we've sent out some correspondence related to the business license, so I'll just leave it at that. We've been working with Mr. Adams. And then regarding the lost documents, we, years back when Mr. Chris Wilson was here, we did search for those documents and they are, we looked on microfiche, everything, could not locate those older documents, they were just lost. So we did look at, regarding the fireworks, I'll get with Shirley on that and see if you want to put an item on the agenda.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say that I have observed in a few occasions where people have those long dog leashes, and as a matter of fact, I got entangled in one of them. Didn't know that, I thought I was a safe distance and the dog figured, you know, wanted to get to know me a little better. And luckily, I'm not afraid of dogs in particular, but I think sometimes those are, they can be kind of rude with those extended dog leashes, you know, kind of defeats the purpose of requiring your animal to be on the leash if they can pretty much, you know, run twenty feet ahead of you or have you, so. We have to make sure we, I'm not really sure what all we can do about it, but obviously we can bring that to the people's awareness, but it's unacceptable to let your dog run quasi loose, right? I'm going to call it that. So I sympathize with the going after your cat, the dog going after your cat. I also want to make mention the fireworks. I would be interested to see how many cities cut off fireworks and in what particular time they cut off the use of fireworks on the, on the Fourth of July, you know, twelve o'clock, eleven o'clock, or whatever happens to be up here, I would be interested in that. I'm also interested in when Mr. Randall was talking concerning the wholesale, what you brought up, a council, the wholesale permit. I'm not really sure how that works or how, you mentioned, you mentioned that Carson has a wholesale permit, not sure how, assume that it's legal for them to do so, to have a wholesale, require a wholesale permit, but that's, that's an interesting concept to get the wholesalers, you know, to participate in to making sure that we have fireworks suppression, legal fireworks suppression as well as just the cleanup, you know, in general. So I would be interested in looking at that. Also with the Hawthorne Motors, I want to thank Vicki and Haas for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, we want to do all that we can for all of our businesses in the city of Longdale, particularly our longstanding businesses that have been in Longdale for years, providing quality service to our community and of course, jobs in our community. So definitely want to work with Hawthorne Motors to see how we can resolve this issue. So, so someone will be getting in touch with you. The street parking, with John and Dixso, yes, please submit your plans to the planning, planning department and we'll see what we can do. It's kind of hard to describe it here, but let them take a look at that and hopefully we can get some belief because the parking situation is not going to get any better, especially with the mandate to build housing and not require parking, as much parking as we would like, it's not going to get any better. So we're all going to have to be good neighbors when it comes to parking. But I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention, sir. With that, I think that's all I have. And of course, I really appreciate the librarian sharing the information about the library, all the programs at the library, in particular, the healthy food choice programs. Thank you, madam. And with that, that's all I have for public comments. I will close public comments at this time and remove our agenda to item G, which is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of the body concerning this, the consent calendar? Okay, so the motion's been made by Currie to approve the consent calendar as far as the second, is there any discussion on the motion, seeing with the council, those who are in favor of the motion, those who are in favor of the motion, signify by seeing a high, high, any opposition to the motion, signify by seeing a negative, any extensions? Okay, you want to make an announcement? Okay, the motion has carried. Okay, five-o, unanimous. All righty. Okay. Next item on the agenda is under administration, California State Proposition sixty-eight per capitol grant agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Nice to see everyone tonight. Tonight, we're going to talk about the California State Proposition sixty-eight grant agreements, and it's been a long time since we approved City Council Resolution two thousand eleven dash zero sixty-one. Since we have a couple new members, I'll just give a brief presentation on what the project entails. It's been a long time, but briefly, Proposition sixty-eight was passed by fifty-seven point six of the California voters back in June two thousand eighteen. There are several components to Proposition sixty-eight. The two components that equate to money for Longdale is number one, the two thousand eighteen Parks Bond Act, and then also the urban county grant as well. So we are fortunate to, to be awarded a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for two different projects here. The Parks Bond Project Act reaped a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, and the urban grant component of Prop sixty-eight got us twenty-one, just under twenty-one thousand dollars in grant funding for the second project. On November second, two thousand twenty, City Council Resolution CC two thousand eleven dash zero six-one was approved for the recreation facility security camera replacement project. Some of you folks probably remember that. Along the way, along the grant application project, process, we found a little, little pot of gold worth another, just short of twenty-one thousand dollars to initiate a second project. We were unaware that we got a little bit more money, but we were able to find that. So the first project scope is for the recreation security camera replacement project. This will be up at up to five facilities, Hogan Park, Hopper Park, Rudolph Park, the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center, and potentially McKenzie Gardens. And what we plan to do with this money, which again, was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars awarded to the city for this project, is we have different facilities that were opened at different times and constructed at different times. For example, we had Hopper Park two thousand nine, we had the community center in two thousand eleven, Rudolph Park in two thousand sixteen, Hogan Park in two thousand fifteen. So we have different types of security cameras. Some of them have the old HD, which predates the HD, so SD is specifically standard definition, others have high definition. Well, doing my research about camera and cameras and security cameras and technology and all that, technology has just really taken off over the past five to six years. So we're looking at really nice, state-of-the-art cameras, maybe two K, possibly four K, where you can really see the freckles on somebody's face if you're trying to zoom in to see something. So that's the first project. Once again, we were awarded a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So what we plan to do besides replace all the existing cameras, because we do not have wall-to-wall coverage, each park, for example, Hogan, Hopper, and Rudolph, they have about four or five cameras each, there's not wall-to-wall coverage, there's a lot of holes. They generally look at the gates, the offices, different components, the playgrounds that require higher levels of risk management. But what we're going to do is we're going to add additional cameras to each facility, and we're going to strive for wall-to-wall facility coverage on all the parks and the community center as well. I know that video cameras sometimes in, in projects, video cameras kind of get looked at last, and if there's not enough money left over for that, we usually just, it's usually typical to just go with whatever's left over. So once again, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for the security replacement, security camera replacement project. And what this will do, among other things, just really basically, what it will do is it'll, we'll also implement a centralized management system. So right now, we have different cameras at different parks, you have to actually go to the park, go into the closet, get on the computer to look at what's happening, and it's, it's kind of like a post, a post thing when you're reviewing, like, like post incident, you go, go to the park and review what's happened and all that and try to figure out solutions. But this will put a centralized management system on all the camera systems in the city that are tied into this centralized management system where you can actually route the information to different computer stations throughout the city, and you'll be able to manage it all from one location. And the benefit of this also is if we have park expansion, if we replace cameras somewhere else, we can also tie those cameras into the central management system and have a one comprehensive system where we can see any camera at any part of a recreation facility from, from a computer monitor. We don't have to go out to the park and view, and it's just a better system in terms of risk management. The second pot of money we found money for was for the urban county grant, that was twenty, just as I said before, under twenty-one thousand dollars. What we're going to do with that money is we're going to build a, we're going to add a monument sign for Hogan Park on the south side of Hogan Park, you know, one sixty-eighth comes to a terminus, and it basically has a roundabout. We have a nice, about thirty, thirty-foot diameter flower bed there, a curved flower bed. There really isn't doing anything there, it looks nice with some pretty flowers and stuff, but it really doesn't serve any purpose. So we think that a nice, beautiful monument sign for Hogan Park would really benefit the park, it'll help people get more visibility of the park, it'll raise the aesthetic value of the neighborhood as well. We'll be able to do something really, really nice there. And once again, that was a separate pot of money of about twenty-one thousand dollars. So once again, the entire grant award is about one hundred and ninety-eight thousand The fiscal impact for this will be about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, which will work with finance as the budget system comes around, the budget season comes around, and we'll actually put this money in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. And then the projects are both reimbursable when the projects are completed, so we can apply for reimbursement in a minimum of ten, ten thousand dollar increment. So these, both of these projects will fully be paid for by the state, but we have to put something in the budget to get the project going until we get to the point where we have spent enough money to be reimbursed. What else? The next step for both of these projects will be RFP. I have an RFP ready for the security camera replacement project that will probably go out next month, and then I'll be putting together another RFP for the monument sign at Hogan Park. And what else? The project completion deadline is March two thousand twenty-four, so we have plenty of time to get these projects done. I'm anticipating that the security camera project will be finished first. My goal there is to finish it within a year. And then also the Hogan Park Monument Sign Project, that'll probably come later, that's a simpler project, but it would be my goal to possibly have both of these completed within a year. In terms of legal review, the city attorney has reviewed the attached agreements and has approved them as to form, and the recommendation is very, very simple. Appreciate you. Appreciate you guys giving me the time to give you a brief project overview. But staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the attached 2018 Parks Bond Act agreements, which there's two of them. One contract is number C9801318. The second one is contract number C9802118, provided by the California State Department of Parks and Recreation. And staff's available for any questions, if you have any.
Michael, on the Hogan Monument Wall, I'd like to have children participate in the design, maybe a handprint or something, the kids that go there, so that it'll live on forever with the sign.
My question is, when we're talking about camera replacement, is there going to be the opportunity, if we're trying to make a central hub, where theoretically, we could have an office here with a large screen with the different parks on view in like a security-type setting? Is there an opportunity for us also to have whoever's on call to be able to have access remotely to that system wherever they're at? As we're moving forward, that seems like it would be a pretty important thing that not just after the, but while we have something going on or when I'm calling and saying there's homeless in the park, that whoever I'm calling has access, whether it be yourself, the city manager, Michael Reyes, that they could key into and get that information and see what I'm seeing?
Yes, that is possible. And I failed to mention remote, but this is a remote system. It can be viewed from anywhere. It can be viewed from a mobile device, a cellphone, an iPad, whatever it can be. And you designate certain computer stations or certain mobile devices for the information to go. So if we wish to have MSD, Mr. Reyes have it, you know, Julian with Public Works, we can certainly route that to any mobile device or any computer in the city. Oh, yes, yes. And we can send it to multiple stations? Yeah, very, very, very good question. So central management system has several components, and that's one of them. One thing we can't do that a lot of other cities do that I've already looked at is like the city of Gardena, for example. They have their own police department. Some of the beach cities have their own police department. They're able to route it directly to the police station. And they can actually have people watch the video cameras and be more reactionary and quicker. But we don't, unfortunately, don't have that with the county sheriff's department. They don't provide that. But it is still kind of a reactive situation. But you can see stuff that is live. If we wanted to dedicate somebody to watching live footage, we could. I mean, you could theoretically, if you have, you know, 64 cameras, just as an example, like for the community center, we have, I think it's 18 or 20 cameras. You can actually see them all in split screen, and you could actually have somebody watching it. I think that can be managed, absolutely. And the other real good thing about routing it to mobile devices is if you have a hotspot, and let's say the camera is facing this way, and you have a hotspot that you want to watch, you can actually control the angle of that camera from a mobile device, and you could move it instantly. You know, if we're having the cameras facing over here, we don't have any issues over here, but we have cameras, issues over here. We can realign those cameras instead of sending somebody out with the ladder and climbing up and moving the camera where you want it. So it's really going to be a nice, state-of-the-art system. And like I said, we're looking at possibly two or 4K cameras, depending on the cost. And we are intent on getting the highest level cameras that we can for the money that we have.
Your staff recommendations. I hope that Quivas is in the second. Invite Pat Kearney. That we approved the staff recommendation on item six. Are there any discussions on the motion? Seeing that all those are in favor of the motion, signify by saying nay. Any extension? Any opposed to the motion, signify by saying nay. Any extension? Seeing that the motion is in favor, unanimous. Madam Sinclair. All right. Next item is item seven approval. I'm going to place a given. Indian Wood Park.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Member of the Council. I'll make this thing very quick. As I informed you last council meeting, that Metro has informed us that we have about $1.2829 million in Prop C fund that will be lapsing as of June 30 of this year. And at last meeting, City Council approved about $500,000 to be spent on the citywide street signs. To continue to chop off that $1.29 million, the staff would like to move, use Prop C funds for current Inglewood project. Currently, there is about $456,000 under the 2009 TAF Bond Fund that would like to go ahead and move to this fund so that we don't lose the lapsing fund. So with that, staff recommends the city council to authorize Director of Finance to decrease the appropriation from 2009 TAF Bond Fund for Inglewood Avenue Street Improvement Projects by $456,469. Authorize the Director of Finance to decrease the appropriation for the Prop C Fund for the Redondo Beach Boulevard Improvement Project by $487,276.71. And authorize the Director of Finance to appropriate $487,276.71 to the Prop C Fund for the Inglewood Avenue Street Improvement Project from Prop C and appropriate fund balance. With that, staff, any questions?
Okay, thank you for the report. Mr. Public Works Director. Is there any discussion on this motion?
On this item? That's here from Kelsey.
So we're taking, putting the fund back to be funded? Inglewood Avenue, using this money? So this washes each other out, we'll have the fund back in. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
You know, I'm a little slow. Like all this time, I'm like, okay, what's that? I thought he was saying fight on or something like that. Wasn't really sure. Okay, so we have a motion. Motion by Suarez and a second by Hoffman Gorman. Yeah, Hoffman Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And I take that the motion is to, for all three of these items, the staff recommendation. Okay, that being the case, all in favor of the staff recommendation, the motion, signify by saying aye. Oh, aye. Okay, any opposition? Signify by saying nay. Any extension? Okay, motion is passed, unanimous. Number seven. Okay, number eight. Number eight, item number eight is proposed for special use permit, general plan amendment, density bonus.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You did consider this project as a project at your last meeting. Unfortunately, in my absence, my partner who was standing in for me did not realize that we have to read the entire title of the ordinance as part of the adoption process. It's a Brown Act requirement, so I'm going to read it right now, and then you can go ahead and vote on it. Normally, this would be on consent, but because I have to read the title, we had to make it an action item. The ordinance is ordinance number 1187-22, An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, Setting forth findings of fact and determinations relative to case number 21-18, General Plan Amendment and Zone Change for the Development of a 10-unit Apartment Building Located at 14723 Prairie Avenue, and a Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. That is my report, sir. I would only ask that, because this is an ordinance, we do vote by roll call for this matter. Thank you all very much.
All right, so for item number eight, Mayor Protem Hoffman Gorman, Councilmember Cuevas, Councilmember Suarez, Councilmember Kearney, Mayor Pauline Miles, motion passes unanimously.
Authorize the repair of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC system at the Harold Hoffman Community Center.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. On March 7, City Council meeting, Mike provided the several elements that's vital to reappointing the reopening of the community center. And one of them is the repair of the HVAC system. Staff received three bids for the HVAC repair with South Coast Facility Services providing the lowest responsible bid. Therefore, staff recommends the city council to authorize the repair of the HVAC system at the community center to South Coast Facility Services in an amount not to exceed $33,456.
Were any of these three companies local vendors? Did anyone from Longdale? Is this, is the South Coast the one in Inglewood? Thank you.
Okay, so motion has been made in second. Wait. Just to make sure, Pat Kearney made the motion in the second by Quivas?
Second by Quivas.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, next item on the agenda. Another item, the city council agreement this time, purchase and installation of touchless main door. Send staff.
Again, this item is another critical elements for the opening of the city council to the community center. It is the automated door, or also known as touchless main entrance, for this community center. The city has received three bids for the installation of a touchless main entrance and determined that the Vortex Industry provided the most responsible bid. Therefore, staff recommends the city council to authorize the purchase and installation of the touchless main door for the community center to the Vortex Industry Services in an amount not to exceed $24,112.49.
Do we have a warranty with these, with this company? And is there a maintenance contract that we're having them provide us? And also, what's the difference between the door from Waypoint and Vortex?
So we do have a one-year warranty with Vortex, and we don't have a maintenance contract, but we've been pretty good with their services. All our doors, the doors for the city hall, MSD building and the Public Works Department are installed with Vortex, and we haven't had a problem with that. And then the last question was... Yes. So what we requested was, we request a brand-new unit automated door. However, the Waypoint wanted to use the existing frame, which we feel that will be a trouble because we're having trouble with current door, and we need a brand-new door instead of just a, just a, just a door unit. So that's the reason why they're going to provide the proper proposals. Thank you.
Well, that answered part of my question, because I was going to ask if there are any components that you can salvage and reuse for the doors, for example, like the glass parts? Like, does that get worn? I mean, I don't know if there's any, or they just require completely new replacement? Okay, that was my question.
Not close for me sometimes. So we do need the whole, the door to be replaced.
Just a follow-up. I assume that the parts are in, good supplier parts, and they're not going to be out of parts like next year, something like that. And we have to ship them away for six months or a year to get new parts or discontinue? So we're confident that in the future, we won't have any problems with, like, finding a part? Like, say, we need a little bolt? Okay, okay. Make it true. Yes. Thank you. What is the pleasure of this item concerning this item? Quivas says, oh, she said we're providing ten second. Aye. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? See? Uh, there's a big motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposition to that? Any extension? See? I am left. I am for the mayor and the council. Thank you.
I attended with most of my colleagues, three events. Their first one was La Mongol Ice Cream Parlor. It was very well attended. Sean had a picture with the young lady that got him in trouble at home. him in trouble at home. I also attended Coffee with the Cops, that was well attended. And last but not least, we went to CNS Gardens Center, which was well attended. I asked about thanks for cataract, but they don't sell that there, but I said, all right.
I attended last month the General Assembly for the South Bay Cities Council of Government. Surprisingly, there were over two hundred and fifty attendees, so it was pretty well attended. And then, I did attend La Machu on a premium ice cream. Apparently, there's a difference between the different locations, and they're corporate, or that's what they had told us. And then, Coffee with the Cop, which was well attended, and then also the CNS Gardens. So with that, I'll pass it on.
I actually attended four events this past month. El Camino College Community Walk Against Hate, it was well attended. We had representatives, Holly Mitchell Office, Anna Anne, also, we had Senator Bradford, Congresswoman Metz and Waters. We all walked around the college, and then there was, there was a, a training, a self-defense training for about thirty minutes that you could take for free. I also attended the ribbon cutting of the Metroplana Premium Ice Cream Parlor that is located at El Super Shopping Area, the Coffee with the Cops, and also the ribbon cutting at CNS Garden, which is located on Marine and Freeman, I believe.
I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Ice Cream Parlor. That was well intended by the community. It was, that was a really nice event to attend. Also, I want to thank city staff and the residents for showing up for Coffee with the Cops. I heard a lot of good conversations, and I would just like to encourage our listeners to come and participate, communicate with City Hall as to what time of day is better for you, so that we can move the time around so that more of our residents can be involved in this. One of the healthy conversations that were going on there is the desire for Neighborhood Watch, so I want to also encourage our listeners to, also City Hall, speak to us, get the name on the list, let's get Neighborhood Watch going. What makes our sheriffs strong is when we are watching out for each other. It's very important, and I want to see us moving forward on that. I have two more things to say. I want to remind everybody that tomorrow is the last day for the drop-off for the election that we're holding here. Our drop-offs is over at Hopper Park, so let's, if you haven't already voted, let's go ahead and get that taken care of. And since this is the last opportunity before Easter Sunday, I also want to remind our residents that on Saturday, the sixteenth, we are doing something different this year. We're having Easter egg hunt at both William Green and Jane Addams schools. The three-to-seven-year-olds are going to be at William Green, and the eight and above are going to be at Jane Addams. And the starting time on both of those events are nine-thirty to twelve. If you want a more specific time as to what time each one of the age groups is participating, please go to the city website and take a look. I have one more item that I would like to bring up, and this is probably for Sean. Sean, we have, going off of Neighborhood Watch and Coffee with the Cops, I would like to know if it is possible, now that we have a new sergeant and a new lieutenant, if we could set up a meeting with a couple of us council people, yourself, maybe Michael Reyes, with the Sheriff's Department, just to go over and, and look at what lack the expectations of what Longdale is wanting, and have a question and answer time, so that we better fit together as a community and the Sheriff's Department. Is that possible?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think what we're hearing is maybe, I have to check, maybe an ad hoc, we could put an item on the agenda for next agenda, and add, put together and have the council select two committee members, say that's okay, yes, to say that's okay, two ad hoc members that want to sit down with the sheriffs and give you something like that for the next agenda.
It feels like there's one more, so let me take a look. There was one more. I just think it would be a good time to, and I would be interested in attending, so to me. There was one more thing, but right now I don't see it on my chickens' menu.
Thank you. Let me just remind everyone, we do have the quarterly meetings that we have with the Sheriff's Department, although sometimes you might skip a quarter. It seems like there's a desire for the entire body, at least a few members have expressed that they would also like to be able to be in that meeting, so it might be appropriate to have it at our quarterly meeting that we normally have. We wouldn't have. But we can do the quarterly meeting basically anytime. Quarterly just means do it, and then the next time would be like quarterly, you know, but we can do it right away. Yeah, I'm fine either way. I mean, I just want to make sure that those who want to be in the meeting, that opportunity. Okay, let's look into that. So what I have, what I, thank you, I attended, I attended La Metroplana Premium, you said, uh, premium, uh, yeah, premium, uh, ice cream, very good ice cream, I had two of them, so it was very good, yeah. And it really wasn't ice cream, it was, oh, service, that's what, okay. Anyway, it was very good. They were very good, I should say, right. But we had a great turnout, though. Yeah, we had tacos in a bag. Yeah. I was telling my friends, we had tacos in a bag, right? Oh, those tacos was good, too. You know, papas, yeah, they were very good, yeah, they were very good. Anyway, I want to welcome to the city of Longdale, I live somewhere, oh, we had a lot of people show up. We had a celebrity, celebrity, yeah, Sean, yeah, we know, yeah, Sean, I know her name. Besides Sean, what was her name? Minel Kande was the celebrity guest, and I thought for some reason, man, a lot of people really showing up for the mayor, you know, when I pulled up, right? But little did I know, but I like, why are so many, the male persuasion here? That's going to be my cue right there, right? And, but I, but I hear she's a wonderful actress. She's an actress, right? Yeah, right, because they were playing her songs, right, yeah, yeah, right. Anyway, they did a bang-up job, a lot of people showed up, it was a good time. We had tacos, we had two different types of ice cream. We, we did dance, absolutely, we danced. So if you get a chance, go by and check it out, right there at El Super Market. And the only other thing I attended also was the sanitation discipline. How exciting is that? We're having a full session tonight, so our next regularly scheduled meeting of Longdale City Council. Okay, we have one more.
PM on Monday, April eighteenth, 2022, in these council chambers. It is now 8:17. This meeting is hereby adjourned.